Good evening. I'd like to adjourn back into public session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So great to see so many people out in the audience tonight. We have a very exciting announcement tonight. We have the appointment of the Deputy Superintendent of Schools. So I have a few words prepared, and then I will invite the new superintendent to be up. After an extensive search and thorough interview process, we are pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Tracy Norman as the new leader of the MW School District effective July 1, 2024. I have some excerpts from Dr. Norman's bio. Dr. Norman's educational journey started with Alabama A&amp;U University, where he obtained a bachelor's degree in elementary education. He pursued further studies and earned a master's degree in elementary education from Alabama State University. He then expanded his expertise with a master's degree in national resource strategy from the National Defense University in Washington, DC. And he ultimately achieved a doctorate in educational leadership from Rowan University in New Jersey. Dr. Norman's professional journey in education spans over two decades, marked by continuous advancement. He began as a sixth-grade teacher in Montgomery Public Schools in Montgomery, Alabama. In 1998, he moved to New York and assumed the role of elementary assistant principal in Beacon. His dedication to educational excellence has led him to the Lakeland Central School District and now here. He progressed from assistant principal to principal and ultimately to assistant superintendent for instruction. Throughout his career, he has been a passionate advocate for student success and teacher development, always striving to foster an enriching and supportive educational environment. In addition to his educational career, he brings a wealth of experience from his extensive military background as well. His military career has been marked by a series of promotions and increased responsibilities, reflecting his dedication and leadership capabilities. Currently, he is active in the New Jersey Army National Guard, where he holds the rank of Colonel. In this role, he continues to apply his extensive knowledge and experience to contribute to national security and mentor the next generation of military leaders. Balancing his dual careers in education and the military, he has developed a unique perspective that combines discipline, strategic thinking, and a deep commitment to service. The Board of Education is confident that Dr. Norman is the ideal leader to guide our district into the future. We are confident that together we will provide even more exceptional educational experiences in our district for all students. Please join me in welcoming our next district leader, Dr. Tracy Norman, who will now say a few words.
Good evening. I am deeply honored and excited to stand before you as your newly appointed Deputy Superintendent of Schools. Anticipated. As I embark on this incredible journey with you, I want to begin by expressing my heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Education for their trust and confidence in me. I also want to extend my sincere thanks to Ms. Joanne Kaplan and the district-wide search consultants for a professional process, and all the administrators, teachers, staff, parents, and students who have welcomed me with open arms and warm hearts. Pamela and I moved into this community in 2000 and dreamed about an opportunity to work within the school district. I am eager to immerse myself in the vibrant culture here, to learn from each of you, and to work collaboratively to build upon the strong foundation that has been established. Communication and collaboration are cornerstones of a successful school district. I'm looking forward to engaging with all members of our community, to include parents, students, teachers, administrators, staff, and local leaders. Your insights, feedback, and support are invaluable as we work together to achieve our shared goals. I believe that by working as a united team, we can overcome challenges, celebrate successes, and make meaningful progress toward our vision for the future. As I take on this role, I am filled with optimism and enthusiasm. I am excited to witness the incredible achievements of our students, to support our talented educators, and to engage with our passionate community members. I am confident that, together, we can create an environment where every student feels valued, supported, and empowered to pursue their dreams. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity. I am honored to serve our great community, and I look forward to building a bright and successful future for the Monroe Woodbury Central School District with gratitude and anticipation. Thank you.
4.1, which was the approval of the revised agenda, but how could you blame me? Right? It was a really long process and a lot of hard work went in, but we really feel like we've got the best candidate possible. Can I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentation of middle school yearbooks.
You have to appoint.
5.1. See, I really am. I'm off it today. Appointment of the Deputy Superintendent of Schools. May I have a motion to appoint?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
6.1, presentation of middle school yearbooks.
Good evening, everyone. We want to thank the Board of Education, Ms. Rodriguez, and administrators for supporting the Yearbook Club. Thank you to the middle school faculty and staff for your generosity and flexibility. We want to thank the middle school administrators, especially Mr. Berger, for having complete faith in all that we do. Lastly, we want to thank Noreen Guerra for her unconditional and constant support and guidance. At the middle school, we are a family, and we all support one another to provide the best learning environment for our students. Noreen embodies this, and we will truly miss her in her retirement. Before we pass the mic off, I want to declare that out of eight books Mrs. Kirin and I have published, this one is the one I am most proud of. This is because we did the least amount of page design as middle school advisors. Instead of Mrs. Kirin and I, it was these two amazing students, our club president, Holly Romeo, and our club treasurer, Sofia Henriquez, who created most of the pages in the book. These two individuals are MW's finest. Not only are they creative, they are self-motivated and exhibit grit and dedication. We will miss them both as they move to the high school next year. We wish we could keep you both forever, but the high school is very lucky to have you.
Hello, I'm Sophia, and this year I was the Yearbook Treasurer. The book's theme is "A World of Possibilities," and we include an Alison Wonderland quote: "The only way to achieve the impossible is to believe it is possible." This year's book has a total of 144 pages. On page 16, you will see our eighth graders in the foldouts, and on the last page of the book, we featured most of our 17 faculty and staff members who are retiring from the middle school this year. I worked on the book for a total of 55 hours and will continue to contribute many more hours since we will be distributing the books tomorrow and Friday to the middle school students. I've been a Yearbook member since the sixth grade, and I've enjoyed being a part of the program since then. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Holly, and this year I was the Yearbook Club President. I clocked in a total of 197 hours working on the yearbook. Not only did I create and edit dozens of pages, but my design was chosen as the cover of our yearbook. The process began when I was in seventh grade. I came up with a few different ideas, and then the club voted on which one they liked the most. From there, I drew, redrew, and redrew again until we met with an artist who helped us create the cover that you see in front of you. The shiny birds that you see in the sky are UV-activated and will turn purple. We are very proud of this cover, and we will miss working on the middle school yearbook. However, both Sophia and I are looking forward to joining the Yearbook Club in high school next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, item 7.1, commendations.
Good evening. National PTA has a longstanding commitment to arts education. The Reflections Program provides opportunities for recognition and access to the arts, which boosts student confidence and success in the arts and in life. Each year, over 300,000 students in pre-K through grade 12 create original works of art in response to a student-created theme. This 50-year-old program helps them explore their own thoughts, feelings, and ideas, develop artistic literacy, increase confidence, and find a love for learning that will help them become more successful students in school and in life. This is a no-cost program accessible to all students. This year's Reflections theme was "I Am Hopeful Because." Please note that many of the winners are not present today to receive their awards due to conflicts. Two of tonight's winners will be attending the Reading Boulders Challenge, and they will be throwing tonight's first pitch. Please come up to the stage when your name is called. This year's winners are: From Smith Clove, Olivia Cordero. From North Main and Photography, Abigail Estrella. Visual Arts Intermediate, Danika Levinson. And Literature Intermediate, Liro Fasikas. From Central Valley, Madison Campfoy for Literature Intermediate. For Literature Intermediate, Lily Perez. For Photography, not present, Andy Pierce. For the Middle School, we have Anushka Shandjak for Photography. And Emilio Perez. We also have, for Visual Arts, Anushka Shandjak and Lincoln Pierce. For Photography, Harrison Aaron. From the high school. And for Music Composition, Jordan Cooper. For Central Valley Visual Arts is Tyler Campfoy and Aiden Cordero. For 2024 PTA Reflections Merit Awards, Anushka and Shandjak won the Central Hudson Region Literature and New York State Award winner for the middle school. And Emilio Perez won it for the middle school, won a merit award. Yeah, we're good?
One more.
With Tyler.
I promise we're usually more organized than that.
Where's Bernie?
It is truly an honor to express our heartfelt gratitude to all of our PTA presidents, past and present, for their unwavering dedication and tireless efforts in supporting our students. Your leadership and commitment have created countless opportunities for our children to thrive, grow, and succeed. You have championed their needs, advocated for their rights, and ensured that every student feels valued and supported. Your work has not only enriched our school but also strengthened our entire community. From organizing events and fundraising to foster a spirit of collaboration, your contributions have made a lasting impact on the lives of so many. Thank you for your passion, perseverance, and unwavering belief in the potential of every student. Your legacy of service and dedication will continue to inspire us all. With deepest appreciation, we celebrate each and every one of you. Please come up to the stage as I call your name. For PTA Council, we have Bernie Vega, President; Brian Chase, Secretary; and Lori Leonardo, Treasurer. For SEPTA, we have Bernie Vega, Acting President. The High School, we have Alicia Pavagiano, President. Middle School Jill O'Connell, President. Central Valley Elementary, Brian Chase, President. North Main Elementary, Ashley Torres, President. Pine Tree Elementary, Adriana Abrignani, President. Sapphire Elementary, Lori Leonardo, President. Smith Clove Elementary, Erica Culver, President. Thank you, ladies.
Next up is our Community Connection Award. The Community Connection Awards were created many years ago by our district leadership committee to recognize an individual or organization that exemplifies the spirit of Monroe Woodbury through community-based activities and service to the school district. I am proud to recognize the following community members for their continued support of the Monroe Woodbury School District, and most importantly, our students. And here to honor our first nominee is Bernie Vega, the PTA Council President.
Good evening. Allison Murphy graduated from Monroe Woodbury High School in 2016. Embracing her unique abilities has fueled her determination to earn a high school diploma and pursue higher education. Allison, who has cerebral palsy, uses a wheelchair and is legally blind, has navigated her path to success with the unwavering support of her family and friends. As a proud crusader, Allison shares her inspiring story of resilience, hope, and perseverance with students throughout the district. During special events at our schools, she provides valuable insights on the importance of acceptance and encourages others to look beyond appearance. Allison graduated from Rockland Community College with an Associate Degree in Sociology and a Bachelor's Degree in Disability Studies at CUNY SPS. She serves on numerous boards within our community, embodying the spirit of a true role model for people of all ages. Congratulations.
And our next nomination is on behalf of the school district itself. Pastor Maria Iacovino-Jones is the co-founder and assistant pastor of the Journey Church along with her husband Pastor Peter. Their church's mission, and that of their congregation, is to impact the community with love and service. Pastor Maria and the Journey Church congregation have made a great impact on the students of Monroe Woodbury and most specifically, the students of Central Valley Elementary School. One generous congregant covered outstanding lunch debt for the entire school. The congregation is organizing a drive and collected back-to-school supplies for the students in need at Central Valley. During the early stages of the pandemic, Pastor Jones and the Journey Church organized a faith alliance with other congregations in the area to provide much-needed resources and supplies to families in need when everything was closed down during the pandemic. We extend a heartfelt message of gratitude to the entire congregation of the Journey Church of Hudson Valley under the leadership of Pastor Maria Jones for their generous and selfless acts of kindness for the Monroe Woodbury Central School District. Pastor Jones.
Tonight, I have the honor of being up here to speak about a very exceptional young man. I have a little bit of written content, and then I'm going to be a little freestyle, so get ready. All right, so Michael Martinez has been a dedicated student board representative. This year, he has played a great role in ensuring that the voices of young people are heard in decision-making processes. Michael has demonstrated his leadership through organizing numerous initiatives, including voter registration drives and community engagement activities. Michael's contributions have not gone unnoticed. He has been recognized by the OU, Youth Borough, for his outstanding efforts and achievements. His dedication to leadership, community engagement, and advocacy continues to inspire his peers and make a positive impact on the community. Michael is planning on furthering his education at Masser College, majoring in Political Science. That's the prepared stuff. So, let me give you a little background information. There was a few of us up here that were in charge of the Student Rep Nomination Committee, whatever you want to call it, in choosing him to be our rep for this year. And we interviewed some great people. They were extremely intelligent, very well-spoken people. And then we met him, and he blew us away. This man has a future in whatever he plans to do. He's the kind of person that we want to say he's an alumni of Monroe Woodbury. We need more of Michael's out there. And also, something that I personally loved was the commitment of his family to be at many meetings, to just see him stand up, sit up there, and give his updates every month. I'm going to miss him. I'm going to miss his energy. I'm going to miss his dedication and his passion to his district, and I just want to say thank you, Michael, for everything that you've brought.
Thank you.
And a picture.
Well, I'm back up here again. It is, this next announcement is with a slight sadness because we're losing two tenured and senior board members based on the elections, which is, it happens, it's fine. But these two gentlemen have been an absolute pleasure to work with, so I have a few words to say. It is an honor to stand before you today to recognize and celebrate the remarkable contributions of two of our honored school board trustees. We would like to express our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the outstanding service and unwavering dedication of Jamel Evans and Anthony Anderson. Serving as school board trustee is no small feat. It requires a unique blend of vision, commitment, and perseverance. It is a role that demands not just time and effort, but a passion for education and a deep-seated desire to make a positive impact on the lives of our children, our educators, and our community as a whole. And in all these respects, Jamel and Anthony have truly exemplified excellence. During their tenure, each of them have shown extraordinary dedication to the betterment of our schools. Both have been tireless advocates for our students, ensuring that their voices are heard and their needs are met. Whether it was through championing, 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 it was through championing programs, advocating for improved resources, or fostering an environment of inclusivity and respect, they have always looked up to put the interests of our children first. During their tenure, both have shared their own perspectives and opinions and brought a sense of stability, integrity, and optimism to our deliberations and have been a guiding light in times of uncertainty. Beyond the budgets, policies, and decisions, it is their personal commitment that has truly set them apart. As they step away from their role, we are reminded of the incredible legacy they leave behind. It is a legacy of excellence, compassion, and unwavering dedication. While we will miss their presence on the board, we know that their contributions will continue to benefit our schools for years to come. On behalf of the entire school community, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to Jamel Evans and Anthony Anderson. Thank you for your outstanding service, your leadership, and your commitment to excellence. You've made a difference in the lives of countless students and have set a standard of service that will inspire future trustees. Separately, I also want to thank our VP, Jamel Evans, personally for his hard work, support, and for being someone I could always rely on in my role as president. No task or ask was too big or small for Jamel. He has embraced his role with a fervor during his tenure, and he is the personification of a team player whose presence will be missed. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, confident that wherever your path may lead, you will continue to shine and have a positive impact. I want to thank you, and I will now present plaques to each of them from the Board of Education for their service. Please join me in a round of applause.
Yeah, we're all going up.
I asked the board to join Ms. Hock onstage. And also, recognition of tenured staff. You're up, Ms. Hock.
You have to vote first.
These breaks just kill me. Okay, can I have a motion for the tenure recommendations?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we can join you up there.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my pleasure to present for recognition, recognition, the teachers and teaching assistants who have been approved for tenure this evening. They are a talented, passionate, and dedicated group of individuals who have already had a positive impact on our school community. We're very grateful at the work that they do with our children, and we wish them long, successful careers here at Monroe Woodbury. In our audience, if you're in our audience tonight when I call your name, please come up onstage to be recognized and remain onstage for a group picture. We're gonna begin with our teaching assistants. From Smithcove Elementary School, Kristin Mancuso. Also from Smithcove Elementary School, Jennifer Stevenson. And now we're going to move on to our teachers. Stephen Ashley, from the high school. Science teacher. Alexander Baca, high school social studies. Elise Fagowski, high school physical education. Congratulations. Robert Kelly, high school physical education. Rob is not in the audience tonight because he just gave birth to his brand-new baby girl. Special education teacher, Raquel Nelson. High school science, Stephen Paligoudis. High school technology, Michael Stolt. High school mathematics, Jaden Tonason-Kilner. And now on to our middle school. Congratulations. Adele Correa, elementary education. Maria Diaz, middle school music. Lisa Icarino, middle school mathematics. School counselor, Frances Kik. World language teacher, Cynthia Mangual. Middle school special education teacher, Alexis Randall. Special education teacher, Stephanie Van Etten. And now to our elementary schools. At Central Valley, we have elementary teacher, Kristin Beers. School psychologist, Erin Woods. And from North Maine, elementary teacher, Dylan O'Brien. Also from North Maine, elementary teacher, Catherine Umana. From Pine Tree Elementary School, special education teacher, Diane Duncan. Also from Pine Tree, elementary teacher, Danielle Santoro. From Sapphire Elementary School, elementary teacher, Sarah Lexandra. Also from Sapphire, elementary teacher, Danielle Salerno. From Smithcove Elementary School, ENL teacher, Nina Rubino. We also have one administrator who's awarded tenure tonight as well, and that is Marisol Jackson, high school assistant principal. Marisol was unable to attend this evening due to a prior engagement, but we congratulate her. I want to say congratulations to all of our newly-tenured staff. Welcome to the Monroe Woodbury family, and keep up the good work.
No, I know. I'm getting my paper.
Everybody's following the...
I know.
I'm following the boss.
Ready? Sure. You can. There's another. The first person is... It should be Christine Allen. Yep. Tonight, I also have the honor of recognizing the district's 52 retirees. The individuals I'm about to present have amassed hundreds of years of service to our district and have had an impact on the lives of literally thousands of students. Amazing people like this are hard to find, difficult to part with, and impossible to forget. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank them for all they have done for our school, our community, and most importantly, our children. If you're in our audience tonight, I ask that you come up when your name is called and come up on the stage for what may be the last time in your career. I also want to make you aware that we have paperwork for substitute teachers. If you would like to call my office tomorrow, we will get you set up. I know you want to come back. Congratulations to the following retirees. From Central Valley, elementary teacher, Christine Allen. From Pine Tree, teacher aide, Linda O'Shard. School bus driver, Linda Beach. Computer maintenance specialist, Mary Grace Bouyer. Custodial worker, Paul Calaluca. Computer network specialist, Dorothy Cooper. Principal, Joseph Cotto. Remedial reading teacher, Angela Cox. Custodial worker, Joseph Edwards. Senior payroll clerk, Christine Egan. Twelve-month typist, Patricia Eisenhower. English teacher, Mark Feely. Special education teacher, Nadine Finger. Typist, Stephanie Finn. Personnel assistant, Mary Ellen Garnett. Typist, Ann Gassert. Elementary teacher, Cynthia Glick. AV media, Noreen Guerra. Food service helper, Patricia Kelly Demuro. Cook manager, Renee Keys. Elementary teacher, Jean Krill. Technological teaching assistant, Janet Labella. Elementary teacher, Lisa Landau. Elementary teacher, Lori Lepidus. Congratulations. Teaching assistant, Laura Lawrence. Library teacher, Laura Lerner. Teacher aide, Raffaela Marcano. Typist, Carolyn McAtier. Art teacher, Kathleen McGuckin Van Gelder. Elementary teacher, Eileen Machetti. Teaching assistant, Susan Newman. School bus driver, Alicia Peko. Elementary teacher, Nancy Pfeifer. Elementary teacher, Lorraine Parego. Director of Educational Support Services, Kristin Ranher. School bus driver, Carmen Rodriguez. Science teacher, Mary Ann Ronzoni. Typist, Geraldine Rose. Director of Transportation, Dawn Russell. Custodial worker, Alcida Santos... Salto, sorry. Teaching assistant, Chrisanne Sinersia. Teacher aide, Susan Smith. Teacher of speech and hearing, Catherine Sobel. Typist, Mary Stack. School security aide, Richard Sternkopf. Technological teaching assistant, Mary Ann Sternkopf. Eileen Sullivan, teaching assistant. Elith Thompson, teaching assistant. CPSC Chair and Teacher of Speech and Hearing, Gail Tulo. Special education teacher, Anthony Verbois. Bus attendant, Laura Wickware. And last, but certainly not least, a very special congratulations on your retirement to our leader, Elsie Rodriguez. Well, that was emotional. We've got a lot of good people who put in a lot of time here, and we appreciate every single one of you. Congratulations to all of our retirees, and thank you for the role you have played in contributing to the success of our students. We wish you a happy and healthy retirement, and remember, once a crusader, always a crusader. Thank you.
Didn't beat up your ear?
Way to go.
That was great.
Hard to wrap her head around that with the tenure people.
It's gonna be like that for months.
Okay, back on the agenda, number 13, canvas of the vote and adoption of resolution declaring the results of the annual election held May 21st, 2024. May I have a motion to adopt a resolution and declare the results?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Action item number 15, 15.1 through 15.6.
I am respectfully requesting a motion. The items listed, number 15.1 to 15.6, be polled for review.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye. The motion passes. Personnel, number 16, Ms. Hock.
Yes, I would like to request approval from the board for the items listed under personnel this evening.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business and financial. Ms. Rodriguez, did you have anything you wanted to cover there?
Yeah, I did. Patrick, Mr. Cahill was approached by an organization that was seeking to lease property on the district, 10,000 square feet behind the bus garage to Verizon Cell Tower. So, one of the things we wanted to do was, A, to make the community aware of that, and then to get a little bit more understanding as to what the implications are to have a tower. The purpose really is to have better internet service in that area. However, we do know that there's will be some concerns about having these towers near schools or near developments. So, Mr. Cahill wanted me to let everyone know that one of the things that he's done is he's reached out to the company to sort of get some information regarding this tower and the implications that it can have in the community. So, more to discuss, but we felt it was really important at this time to just bring this up to the communities, to know that this has been, we've been approached about this, and that there are other school districts that in fact have done this. I believe the Marlborough School District has done the same thing. There are benefits, and there are also concerns, so downsides. So, I just wanted to let everyone know about that.
Thank you.
More to come.
Are there any? Are there any questions for Ms. Rodriguez, 17.1 to 17.5? Let's make it a hard one. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committee on Special Education and Preschool Education, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we already did the discussion on the tower. Next up is the adjournment into executive session for purpose of discussing legal updates. May I have an update, a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.